I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen Meeting for, um, is it one day, October seventh?
It is.
That's unbelievable. Uh, to order, um, first order business is pledge leaders, Charles.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, before we go to public forum, we have one item to add to the agenda, and that is an application to place a sign on a green Guilford Interfaith, uh, volunteers, uh, the, um, Christie, Burton, so is there a motion to add that?
Some, second.
And, uh, let me try your mind, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room. I have motion carries. Uh, public forum, anyone wish to address the board in public forum? Uh, looking around, all I see are other town employees on the, on the call, on the Zoom call, anyone in the room? No. All right, uh, item three, approve minutes, uh, three dot one, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, um, regular meeting minutes, is there a motion?
Some.
Have a second? Second, Charles, comments, questions, suggested changes? Full sale revision? Hearing none, uh, let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries. Item, uh, three dot two, and that will be the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, uh, meeting, uh, minutes. Is there a motion?
A move.
Second.
Second, uh, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a comment and possibly an addition.
Okay.
We had a, I thought, a pretty robust conversation about the possibility of releasing at what's now called Central Office North.
Right.
To go back on the tax rules, be sold, raise some revenue for the town.
Right.
And it's, it's mentioned in here, but, um, I mean, select person Ruhoff had a great idea about looking at the, the newly proposed maintenance facility, which we're going to be talking about this morning. So, I don't know, I felt that we left that conversation making a suggestion that Mr. Burnham keep it in mind or pursue it or something like that. We, it wasn't just a question that was answered to our satisfaction.
Okay.
You know, so I don't know quite how to address that.
Um, do we trust Tracy to expand on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Good. Yes. All right, um, uh, so let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, thank you, so. Um, item four, park recreation direct to our kingdom. Gary, come on down. For one, consider take possible action to reallocate fifty thousand dollars of capital funding to the Pittner Playground Project.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, yes, um, we have, after, like, re-analyzing some of these capital improvement plans, I also asked Todd to support me on this because he's been working on this capital improvement project for quite a long time now, researching, talking to vendors, and, um, it's a significant, uh, project that deals with the, the grid system more than just replacing the tiles, and he wants to.
Yeah, um, so originally, when we put this, the funds in for the, um, for the budget, we had just finished a, the Guilford Whitfield Room, and we had a really good contractor, and they replaced the ceiling tiles in that room with some really high-quality tiles. We thought we could just take those same tiles and put them in the Menucha Tuck and Quantapaw Room. The sil- ceiling tiles in those rooms are, um, about thirty years old or so. So, they need to be replaced. But after researching and trying to figure this out, the slope in that room is thirty-five degrees. Armstrong, who's the manufacturer that we've been using, recommends that anything over thirty degrees has to go to engineering approval. So, um, with that, what we've decided is that we really need to go to one of our on-call engineers to have them do a design review of it, and it's gonna be a little bit complicated because, you know, five degrees doesn't seem that much, but when you, when you change something to five, what it does is gonna, um, cause issues with our fire sprinklers, and those elevations will change a little bit, and the angle, so, um.
So, we thought we would take some more time, re-quote it, come back at fiscal twenty-seven with a better number. So, in the meantime, we thought it'd be very, uh, mindful and exciting to repurpose it to Pittner Park because with the four hundred six thousand for the playground, we could only afford to do half of the surface ADA. So, with these additional funds, we would be able to do a hundred percent ADA. And when you're doing something fresh and new like this, it, I think it would be really important, um, to do it the best we can.
So, if we agree to that, the ceiling tiles, soon as they would, would, would happen then, it's not until twenty-six, twenty-seven? And is that gonna be a problem? Sounds like almost two years away.
I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a problem, it's not as if they're falling down, they're not.
Okay.
Um, they're thirty years old, they still look fairly decent, but it's just a matter of putting them in a five-year plan and changing them out, so I think we'll, we'd be able to come up with a better figure, um, and, and engineering.
And that's probably the first step is just the engineering. You know, have an engineer and take, have an engineer take a look at it, and then there's a process there because with standing building, getting an engineer approved to, to look at it.
I think the ADA idea is a good idea, and I support today's potential motion. The question I have on the ceiling tiles, there must be some ceiling tiles in there now that work at this angle, and you're simply wanting to re-engineer it to fit this new product? That old product is not available anymore?
Well, it's, when, when Armstrong manufactured the tiles that are in there now, they, they did a, um, a system with, with a grid and a T-slot, and so they, what happens is the ceiling tiles, they interlock, and then there's a, a support that holds the ceiling tiles from flexing down. They don't manufacture that anymore.
That was my question. Yeah, I, I don't need the white force of it, but, you know.
They don't manufacture that.
They don't make it anymore.
They don't make it anymore. And so, originally, our thought was, we had this great design in the Guilford Room, which is a sloped ceiling. We thought we could just take that same design and put it in the Menucha Tuck Room. But it's unfortunately, and we, we've tried everything to, you, you know, we've had an Armstrong look at all kinds of different options, and we went, talked to their engineers, they're like, you have to have an engineer look at it and design it.
Another piece to that, too, I just wanted to sure I say that publicly, is that, um, thanks to Public Works, um, and his, Dave Castro's crew, they, they went in and physically did, um, all this in-house work and saved us twenty thousand dollars in order to do this, um, additional ser- uh, playground service, which I think is just amazing. It was really great to see how much in-house work went in there with Parks and Rec and Public Works. Then the other little one, I'm sorry, was also the ten thousand, um, was also another fiscal, um, twenty-four, uh, to replace the siding in the community center building for ten thousand, that's also part of this. Um, but I, apparently, when it was initially budgeted, they assumed the work was gonna be done in-house by our staff, but our staff, we just don't have the skill set to do siding.
Sure you don't want to try that, too?
Well, we.
We tried.
We, we tried the left side, and we did it.
Remember you did it.
And we, it came out great, but it's a lot of work and, um, so.
And they're, and it's tall.
It's tall, it's twenty-five.
Yeah.
We have a professional discount.
Yep.
We'll re-quote that as well.
It just, I think, needs to be stated that when we first, uh, allocated funds for the playground, it was during, it was just after we received ARPA funds, so that was probably in twenty twenty-two. It was, and it was, these were estimates, uh, so I think we did pretty well coming in, uh, as close as we did to the budget, but, uh, I, I, I agree with Charles, um, doesn't make sense to have the playground ADA accessible. The whole playground should be accessible. Do we have the same issue with, uh, the, uh, Jacob's Beach?
I'm working on that because that's a much larger site, so the bridge, the, the design we currently have now only has two areas that have rubber surfacing because it's, it, four hundred ninety thousand dollars is the equipment and too small pieces of rubber sections to be ADA. However, I've been in touch with, um, the resident who's also going to be donating the shade structure, and he, he just said, send me your wish list because I don't want you to be, to, to take certain things away from the playground. Um, let's get this done right, so we're gonna be meeting when I get back from Atlanta, and, um, I said, one of my biggest wish lists would be to do the service a hundred percent ADA.
I had the opportunity to talk to that gentleman at, I think, one of the concerts, uh, and, uh, he made a similar commitment to me, so, it's wonderful.
So, it will be an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the surface to be a hundred percent ADA.
Oh, more reason to, to do that, or, like, everything, there are people in the northern part of town.
Should have the same accent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gave him a fire station, so that's a good ADA for a sort of playground.
Is the surface, the, um, the rubber, I don't know what to call it, is that the main change that's being made?
Yes, yes, and the only change, other than all this in-house work, that wasn't planned originally. Um, and, yeah, that's it, it's an additional seventy thousand, um, this fifty will go toward it, and of course, the twenty thousand dollars savings from in-house work.
Yeah.
Great.
Great.
All right, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
An aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
There was one other, there was the request to repurpose fiscal twenty-five capital improvement funds, again, the ceiling tiles, so the Menucha Tuck, Menucha Tuck and Quantapaw Room, we just are requesting, instead of doing those rooms, we have more time to research, we'd rather do the ceiling tiles in the kitchen and miscellaneous areas in the building. At least we use the twenty-five thousand for that, it's just in a different part of the building.
All right, which we would have, would have shown up in a capital budget down the road anyway.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And there won't be any engineering, there's just, go out to bid, contractor.
Great. All right, um, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Second, second, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Is it, come, come back with some more great ideas?
Item five, town engineer, Janice Blazian. Uh, five dot one, consider and take possible action to award bid number one dash twenty-three twenty-four, State Street Water Main Extension. Good morning, Janice.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Good, um, so this was put out to bid, um, in August, and bids were received. We had a lower bidder, um, but there was a requirement in the bid that they have to become, they have to be an approved, um, contractor by Connecticut Water since it's their infrastructure that's being put in. Um, they weren't at the time of bidding, even though it's at the time of bidding, so I gave them time to get approved because it was a low bid. It was actually very low, substantially low, almost concerningly low, um, but they were unable to get approved through Connecticut Water. They're, they're just not gonna get approved, so, um, it took some time to go through that, so we're here with, um, the second lowest bidder, who's Hemlock Construction, um, at one ninety-four, seven fifty, um, this is ARPA funds, and we're trying to, you know, get this project done before we hit the non-construction season for water main work, so, um, and they, uh, with the ad alternate that I asked for the bidders, they included three hundred dollars per cubic yard for, um, uh, rock removal if we should encounter it, so, with that, I request that we award the bid to Hemlock Construction.
Uh, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll take the motion, question.
Okay, uh, your second, second person, uh, Lou, go ahead.
So, Janice, what, what, what exactly is the relationship between the work we're doing here and, and whatever Connecticut Water's responsibilities? What, what are we doing exactly? It feels like something they should be doing.
Uh, no, we're, they have no interest in extend, extending their line, we're extending the line for the purpose of providing fire service to the new development north of ninety-five. Um, it was unfortunately not included in his project to provide water to his.
Remember this, okay.
Development, um.
Well, he thought he was gonna use the pond or something.
Yeah, it was.
Right.
Yeah, I, I tried to convince him to use, you know, water not only for firefighting, but for servicing his houses, but he went one, one way, and so, uh, and then it was.
Looked at again, my understanding, said, look, where is she going to help?
Yeah, he, he unfortunately didn't think it through, I don't think.
So, once this goes in for fire service, presumably, the houses in there could also use this for their water. They would have to street to their own home?
Yeah, so we're gonna end the, the water main across from the development with a fi- fire hydrant. Um, it's about six hundred feet of main we're putting in, in a fire hydrant. Um, he would then have to, or someone would have to extend the water main into the development if they chose to now water the development, which is really unfortunate.
Are they aware of what potentially is gonna happen today so that if they chose to make that decision to move forward, they could do it all at once? Have they?
Well, it's, it's hard to know who you mean by they, because I think the developer is done.
New homeowners association.
Yeah.
Talking about organizing, my only point would be, you know, being a little familiar with the mechanics and some of the stuff, uh, needless to say, if you're gonna do it, you do it all at once, but I don't know if they're that organized yet.
Well, the problem is.
Just let them know.
Well, yeah, I, I, I wasn't aware of all these issues with the development itself, it's, again, very unfortunate, um, but, um, you know, we're, we're committed to doing the water main for the fire service, what happens with them would be up to them, unfortunately.
Well, I know, it would be up to them, just, I'm just asking, communicate with them and let them know that, you know, assume we're gonna do it this.
Does this extension afford any opportunity to a couple of the houses on the other side of State Street? So, so by extending this, we're not only, uh, potentially helping, well, helping with fire service and potentially getting water to those houses if they choose, but there's a few other Guilford residents that also could buy in.
Yes, once the water goes by your property, then it's available to you for connection, in this case, if it was a developer extending it, um, if adjacent property owners wanted to connect in, they would have to pay towards the costs of the main, um, after ten years, that goes away, but since it's the town, I believe it would be readily available to them. If they chose to hook up, they would have, obviously have to pay their own, you know, cost for connection and connection fees to, you know, to get that water into their homes. Um, and it, it does bring the water further, you know, further north for any future development.
Yeah.
Charles, your point, um, I'm familiar with, uh, I've had conversations with all the residents who are currently in there, is it? There's five now, I believe it is, uh, and they are aware that the water main is gonna extend again. However, they still, the, the association has been, I think it's, uh, state charter has been formed, uh, by state charter, it's been formed as an association, but, uh, not everyone has closed and has moved in there yet, uh, so it's gonna be, it'll, it'll be a little while probably before that takes place, but, uh, and it is unfortunate that they did not connect.
Yeah.
That's gonna be, that's gonna, you know, that's gonna be a substantial amount of money to, to lay that infrastructure.
Yeah, and I believe they lost a number of units because of, they didn't, because of siding wells, and I, I believe in trying very hard to get the developer to consider the water as a good alternative.
Right, and the, and the other thing we have to, you know, realize or remember is that these are affordable houses.
Well, that's the thing, you know, I just.
So, the means may not, so, this may wind up being grant money, state grant money, word of.
Yeah, that's.
To, to that point, just us getting it this far, it is going to be a bust long run, do whatever, it's inevitable.
Right.
And, 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 I mean, the, if I remember correctly, this property was town property to start with, right? The whole point here?
No.
I thought we, I thought our contribution to getting this off the ground was.
Yeah, you're, you're thinking about the Woodruff property, Lou.
Okay.
This was entirely a private developer doing an affordable development.
This is off State Street.
Yeah, no, I, I, I visualize it, I just didn't remember the history that well, okay.
Anything further? Uh, we have motion on table, uh, let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, five dot two, discussion regarding next steps for budgeting for the relocation of the town maintenance facility. Janice, here we go. Construction engines.
Yeah, so.
I'm retiring for you, Janice.
Well, uh, as you know, we, we went out in twenty twenty during, in beginning of the pandemic to do the, you know, the review of the existing facility. Uh, we hired Silver Petrosali at the time, they produced a very detailed report, which, um, we have a copy of. Um, they came up with a concept design for the new property, which we proceeded to purchase, I think, later in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one at the, um, intersection of Long Hill Road and Route eighty for the purposes of, uh, constructing a new facility. Um, we took that plan and kind of fine-tuned it with the change of directors at the Public Works, um, and looking at some alternative ways of approaching these types of facilities, particularly the buildings, um, we found that, uh, you know, consolidating into one larger building with just a few doors for access instead of the original plan with multiple overhead doors and, you know, it was a lot, uh, really is the, like, kind of a new, new way of approaching these types of facilities. Um, so we internally kind of redesigned the building, and, you know, not as architects, but as engineer, you know, site engineers. Um, and then we worked with, um, uh, one of our on-call engineers to fine-tune the grading because it's a very ondulating site, um, so we have, uh, we have what we have, uh, that were really good preliminary start for what we think to be a site plan and building plans, but we can only take it so far. Uh, we've met with Public Works a number of times, allocated all their, uh, equipment and needs for the facility. Uh, we also reviewed it with Pam, um, previously working with Rick, on what the needs of that department were, and, um, you know, it's at a point now where, uh, we could do a little more work, but it's gonna require, you know, a little more money, and really is, 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 you know, are you, are you, wanna move this forward? You know, we really need to start probably, you know, dedicate a building committee, you know, to the process of really fine-tuning the plan. Uh, my, my suggestion, but again, you have to, the building committee would be to approach it more as a design build since we're internally able to take the, the, the site design pretty, you know, pretty, probably to, to completion and approvals. Uh, you know, if that decision, rather than going out for design with an architectural firm and then bidding it, because the type of buildings we're talking about are, um, you know, metal, you know, metal buildings that aren't, you know, it's gonna be, you know, architectural wonders, you know, they're not very complicated buildings, a lot of, the majority of the size is, you know, garage, storage-type buildings. Um, and so I think there might be some benefits to our design-build approach and working with that, um, professional to fine-tune the building design and, and even, you know, maybe the site design, um, to then put it out to bid for construction. But again, uh, you know, there's still work to be done, building committee, and then deciding if, you know, this is gonna enter into our capital plan, which, um, I typically would, I think, be the one having to include it, so I wasn't really sure, so when I met with Matt, he said, let's, you know, have the discussion here and see, um, you know, if, if it's, I think we could budget it as soon as next, next fiscal year's capital, or, you know, you can decide you wanna see it out further, I, you know, but, um, or, or not at all, so, um, the, the plan that was done by the architects, um, you know, spells out some of the problems that we have at our current facility, and certainly the size of the facility is quite limiting in terms of ability to, um, you know, meet the current needs and expand into the future. Location, obviously, is a challenge, uh, being in the floodplain, um, being south of the center of town with limited access to the rest of parts of town, so, you know, I think, I think some of those things are obvious, and I'm welcome to answer any questions or comment, and any ideas you have.
So, what exactly is the question today is whether we move forward, I, or then later?
Yeah, what, what I wanted to do was just, let's, let's get this on public record, uh, I think we wanna schedule a couple of, uh, public hearings or, uh, meetings, informational meetings about what we're intending to do here. That's the price tag, and this is gonna be pretty extensive, this is gonna be a twenty million dollar plus project.
Yeah, I had, I mean, based on.
Thirty here.
Yeah, I had thirty, but again, that's based on, uh, a lot of unknowns with the project.
To that point, I mean, all of the reasons of why you've already made the decision to, and a commitment to make the move. I mean, I, I, one, see no reason to put it off because, you know, the, all of the reasons that we made the decision haven't changed, and getting the trucks out of the green, all of that, but, uh, caution, it could go down. Why, putting it off is just gonna increase our livelihood.
Right, yeah, yeah, that, the study done by, uh, Silver Petrosali and their design, uh, two years ago, they estimated, estimated at twenty-eight million. Um, they had a lot of walls and stuff, uh, we've been able to eliminate the need for a lot of retaining walls for the site development. Um, but there is an extensive amount of site preparation that needs to be done. Uh, we need to do borings to better understand what type of material, I'm sure there's rock. I don't know if it's all rock or just partially rock, and that's what borings will tell us, so that we'll have a better handle on, you know, effort to prep the site to make it, you know, a site for the building.
Any immediate interrupt?
That's okay.
Yo, all of those things are the mechanical part, I think we ought to get it out before the public, so that if we're gonna have any, uh, semantic issues, let, let's get them resolved so that, you know, we're not spending time and money doing the stuff that's going to have to be done one way or the other, you know, let's get that all going forward so that the community is aware and, and we're on the same page of moving forward, I, uh, I, for one, you know, don't see any reason.
So, so Janice, do you think that, uh, we'd be prepared, uh, to go to referendum, uh, either on the budget referendum or a separate referendum for this project by the spring?
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I think it's a good budget, you know, estimate for the project, it's, I don't know what the history has been and when you decide to add things to the referendum, but, um, you know, I think it's a, certainly a, a good budget to work with and fine-tuning the project to meet that budget, one way or another, I think can be done, um. You know, I think we have a site plan, we have a building plan. Do they need tweaking? Yes. Do they need input by a committee? Yes, um, but I think we've taken it quite far. Uh, we've cited, you know, areas for septic, you know, we've done due diligence on the site, full survey of the site, wetlands delineation, so we've taken it quite far, we're extending water main all the way up to the site, and that, that's included in this cost consideration of gas service, but that could go away, or, you know, depending on what the decision is, um, moving forward with a committee and, and design professionals, so, um, yeah, I, I feel comfortable that this would be, you know, a good budget for the project. And then that gives you a parameter on which to work for the project, uh, so putting it out. Now, we have, we have a building plan, we have a site plan to kind of identify what the project is, uh, for people, we have square footages, may change over time, but, you know, we need the money allocated before, you know, to, to Charles, Charles' point, like, you can't, you know, you need to fine-tune things, but if you, why keep fine-tuning when, you know, it's not a real project? Yeah.
Lou?
So, Janice, uh, and, and these, this is just great, and I agree with what everyone's said so far, the sooner we get it out, people absorb a big number, begin to kind of roll it around in their head, this is great, and, and I like the idea of the simple, simplified structures inside, you know, that makes a ton of sense, all this seems great. Is there any consideration, uh, because I noticed in addition to this main structures, you have what you're calling covered parking, which I presume are like, you know, basically what they have the police station now, right? The roof, uh, just roofs over some parking spaces?
Yeah, that's for some of the equipment that, uh, Public Works has, that doesn't necessarily need to be inside for storage, but we'd wanna kind of protect from the elements, but again, Lou, those are things that can be, you know, fine-tuned and discussed as, with the building committee, once they understand what the purposes are, should that even be, or should, can we make it smaller? Or do we need walls, you know, like, those are things, it would definitely be not a conditioned space that would be needed for that equipment.
Got it, that, that's where my question, my question was going, where has, has there been any consideration to getting solar on some of those roofs?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so that, you know, that's not fine-tuned into the project yet, and the cost hasn't really been identified specifically.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think with those types of roofs you're talking about, and you were talking about a development area of about seven acres.
Right.
That, you know, this whole footprint takes up about seven acres, um, that we would wanna have, um, consideration of solar, geo, geothermal for the, for the building, you know, all those, all those, uh, energy-efficient, um, ideas. Uh, the project I did in Branford, building the new fire station, that was a lead silver building, included geothermal, um, water, water, um, recirculation, uh, solar, you know, you wanna make sure you're doing a, you know, a green building as much as you can, given the site conditions.
Awesome, great.
That's a good example of the reason we have to get a building.
Yeah, and even to the design of the building, when you have three. Yeah, and even to the design of the building, when you have three overhead doors instead of. Twenty four or whatever the original design was, you're gonna have a more energy efficient building right there, you know, so. You know, that's kind of what went into kind of redesigning it. And then, yeah, the building committee could take it further.
Great. I, one other sort of totally different question, which is. The, the rebuttal of, you know, thirty million, some people thirty million dollars is gonna hit. I think it's. Makes complete sense and we've been aware of this for some time and obviously you've put a lot of energy into this, getting it to this point. Well, I, I would, I'd be curious to know. What a, what, what a flooding event down at a driveway would cost the town. I don't, I don't know that we want to run out and get another study, but, I mean, just, just, you know, a lineup of equipment alone. Getting flooded would be a staggering number, I suspect. I just, I don't know, just the, the rebuttal points are already starting to sort of roll through my head.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's discussed somewhat in the feasibility, you know, the assessment that was done by Silver Petri Sally, we can. Review that and see if, you know, some, some. Additional. You know, information would be worthwhile to that point.
Yeah, that, we don't need it now, but I mean, I guess a public hearing where somebody's gonna raise that, you know, what are we spending thirty million dollars for? Well, it's to avoid. Spending twelve million dollars on waste at some point.
Right. And there's also the thought that, you know, that, that site will get, you know, repurposed and there's some value to selling off. The existing site and everything, so.
To that point, I've already had one developer ask about. What we're gonna do with that property once it is, once, once we move it north and as a result of the purchase that we had, so. There is, there will be interest in that property.
And there's a better use for that property being, you know, in, near the town center, in the town center and adjacent to, you know. The railroad and so I think, you know, the idea of it being there is, is not current to what the town center plan really would be.
This whole situation, since we all took on this seven years ago, this was a sore thumb, it's like a sore thumb to us. I'm sure when you came on board and when Dave came on board, I'm sure that was one of your first reactions to this makes no sense. I mean, as far as socializing the idea, I think that when we bought twenty two acres specifically for this purpose. Was pretty strong message that we, you know, intend to do this, so I, I'm in favor of. Going ahead. One, one thing that might be interesting to see would be the schedule that you call Mary Jane's favorite. To see how this might layer into that. I mean, and we might see that the timing is good.
That was, I was gonna ask Mary Jane, she might not be able to tell us today, but that was one of my points. Where, where will it fit? We, we assume the building starts in twenty six or something. With the debt service. I, I would think positively.
Yeah, the debt service wouldn't be for a couple of years after that, right? It'd take like lag time for those bonds to start hitting the budget.
So we can make some assumptions.
If we did sell the property with that. If we knew the amount that we could sell it for. Would that be the, obviously, we wouldn't bond as much, correct? We could use that money towards the expense.
We would have to authorize for the full cost to build it, but if we were to realize gains as a result of. The development of, of that property, you can also do tax anticipatory notes. Fund it at a different, a different methodology because theoretically that property is gonna go back on the tax rolls and. With these tax anticipatory financing, you actually allocate a portion of that new tax money. To retire the, the bonds. It's a, there's a, there's a couple of things. I, I just want to caution it. We've been through it, all right? And it's been a couple of years. I'm not sure the community has an awareness at this point. So I think we need to be prepared to tell a full story. And that full story includes what are we gonna do with the, with the property? In addition to why is it, why do we make the decision in the first place, how much risk we're at, and, you know. The thousand year storms are now happening every year, so. You know, now, David and his crew, if we know something big is coming, coming, it's probably gonna go head north anyway, right? Gonna get stuff out of there, but I, I think we need to, and again, I, I, I'm also, I'm also. Thinking that April, May would be too soon for us to effectively get this out in terms of putting a question out. Because this is, this will be the second largest bonded, single bonded project that was, was done. And let's not forget how long it took to get the high school built.
And we don't know what other departments and boards might.
I have a couple more questions. I, I remember when we bought the land, we did have some neighbors come and talk that were close neighbors on Long Hill, I believe. With this plan, because I, I'm not smart enough to read this myself, do, do you have? Trucks or, or any vehicles coming in alongside that last property behind the gas station and the first house? Is that a driveway? Would the trucks be on that driveway?
Uh, yes, that's, so that's an access, we have two accesses to the property. There's one off of Long Hill and there's one off of Route eighty. And it is, there's a, I think it's a. Fifty foot or a hundred foot fee strip we own to Long Hill that that driveway would be brought in through. And, and if you look at the plan, the park and rec kind of sits where that small house is now. That kind of in that general area and would be accessed.
I just, I mean, is it, do we absolutely have to have two driveways?
I think, yes. One, one to a town road, one to a state road, which is kind of nice, but we definitely would want one for our own road. And there will be some grade changes there. I can't read this, it's too small, but. There's, there's a grade change and I believe it's lower than the adjacent property, the driveway, so there's a little bit of. Of that too, you know, and certainly.
I'm sure we would try to make it as pleasing as we could. I realize that, but I just. My other question is, you said you're extending the water, meaning extending it up Long Hill Road, is that correct?
Yes, included in this budget is in a water main extension. It currently ends at Spruce Hill. Uh, which is just north, at the north end of those new, new houses.
So is it about a mile extension?
Little less than a.
I guess, I guess I'm just saying the same thing I brought up about the other. It will, it will allow some residents along that part of Long Hill to potentially. Get town water if they so wish. Is that what I'm trying to say?
Right here, it's, it's thirty two hundred feet of water main extension. So there are quite a few homes that will. Front that new water main and have the option to tie in if needed, or if they want to.
And then the final thing is back to our discussion from last two weeks ago about. Even though you've already done this plan, does it make sense to look and see if we should create even more storage? For school supplies, equipment, so that we could release that house on. In New England. I mean, that's a lot to ask and I keep probably rolling your eyes, but I just figure I'll bring it up.
Well, you know, I've talked with Matt, there's a lot of things up in the air right now that are moving parts and not determined. I wasn't aware about the New England Road property possibly hitting roles. I mean. I have my own ideas. I mean, I think the town really has a lot to consider. You know, you have your. The building next to Adams that needs some additional space. Adams was always looking for more parking. We have a parking plan for that site. If that building goes somewhere else or that, that used go somewhere else along with your food bank. And that could all, I, I've always thought that corner building at. On New England Road would be great for food bank combined, social services. And so. I, I, I just caution releasing land when you don't have a plan for all these needs in town. I've also talked with Matt about. Boston Street and whether that really is a wise building to release when we have so many storage needs in the center of town. Working with Park and Rec. This site is, they love the idea of this new facility, but they also need. Stuff in the center of town for what they, you know, the majority of their work is kind of in the town center for like. You know, sidewalks and things like that, lawn cuttings and things. So. Does Boston Street slash, we have fifty two Church Street up in the air too, have some potential? The police department needs storage. They're currently in Boston Street, so. You know, I, I just caution that I think there really needs to be an overall understanding with all the. Department's needs are for operations and storage. Before you make determinations about releasing properties in town. And that, and then we have, what's not shown on here is this. Uh, driveway around the, you know, side and back of the building is for outdoor storage for all the public works is. Materials and, you know, other equipments and the. Yeah, well, the Sasha is there, but the containers that you do for evictions, you know, things like that, that's all been accounted for on this site plan. So all the storage needs for public works as well as Park and Rec is, is included here, including the buses. Park and Rec's buses. But there's, you know, there are ways that maybe some of what is shown here for Park and Rec. Is, is kind of split up for storage, for parking, for things like that. If we retain Boston. And then something happens on fifty two Church. But again. You know, and I think there is some beneficial uses of that building on New England Road when you're considering. I could share with you the plan we did for an expanded parking area for Adams School.
You mean getting rid of that little gray house with social services?
And they can be combined, obviously. The food bank storage is off this, like really, it's a little chicken coop, you know. Could be, could be improved upon and, and could be all under one roof for their benefit. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of ideas out there.
Let me phrase it a different way. If we, if we don't add more storage at this time and we have twenty two acres and you're using approximately six. Are there other buildable acres on that land if we wish to do something down the road?
So a lot of the land is, is taken up with wetlands, so we had the wetlands flagged. And it kind of just affirmed where the wetlands are, where we, you know, bought over and there is a little bit of a knoll. To the south and east, that's upland area that could be connected to the, to the development area that's being shown. If there is the need for future expansion. But other than that, there, you know, it's kind of, we're, we're maxing out the usable area of the site. We are respecting this, you know, the offsets from wetlands. We have, everything is at least a hundred feet from the wetlands in most areas, so. Uh, those are not forbidden areas, but the grades do drop, so it's, you know, to expand it any further would kind of bring you even closer.
What are the red and blue dotted lines? Those are uplands?
The, the red and blue, the red is, I think, the drainage areas, so this isn't a refined site plan I had for you. I just talked with Michael, we need to kind of take this plan and refine it to a little simplified for people like, laypeople to look at, but. What he's showing here is he's showing also the, to the south is a big. Stormwater management system, so we've, we've fine tuned the plan to make sure we can make all these things that are necessary for. Regulatory approvals fit on the site.
Would be upland.
No, the, the upland boundary from the wetland is the. The fifty foot, I believe, I can't read this, is the dash line, the dash black line. Yeah, and then the next one up is the hundred foot setback, which is.
The red?
No, it's another black line with, which is like straight with hatches and straight, yep.
So what are the red and the blue there?
I believe the red and the blue are the drainage areas. They're drainage areas and sub drainage.
I guess the way they were located, that building that's closest to the back of the. Gas station or that, where that other driveway to Long Hill Road is. I mean, that building is actually a barn, not a home, right?
It's a home.
The one closest to the driveway?
Oh, yes, on the south property, that's a barn, yes. And then the house is a little further.
There are two houses.
Yes, there's. I think, I'm not actually sure what, I think that second house you see is on a separate property. Yeah, it's two properties. Yes, but the close.
That one closes one, it's not.
No, it's not the residence, it's the barn. Yeah, so the, the residence is closer to Long Hill, rather to the south. So there is a bit of distance between.
Okay, that's.
Yes.
Well, you're still there. There is still gonna be an impact to the neighbors. Those trucks back up, I can hear from my house or Park and Rec. And that's, that's a crow flies, what? Half a mile away. So these people, there is.
There's gonna be.
And we need to, we need to address that, but. You know, occasionally, one sacrifices personal liberties for the better of the overall community and that. It's a tough ask sometimes, but.
Yeah, and it's, you know, the expectation when, you know, I've had neighbors fight things in town before. The expectation that empty land is always gonna stay empty land, you know, when you, you just, you can't have that expectation.
Just, I don't know why I'm asking this, but where is the septic?
The septic is shown in green. It's gonna be all the way, all the way to the east. Uh, we did do some, a number of test pits to determine where the best location for septic will be. And that particular area had some decent soils and no rock and, you know, no water in the hole, so. Further, you know, further test pits now have to be done, but we identified that area and it works for the public. Public Works building for sure, and then also Park and Rec. The soils in the area where the Park and Rec building is shown, it aren't very good, so we're anticipating pumping it to all one system. Uh, but that can be further studied to see if there is some possibilities to. Keep them separate if need be. But, yeah, so we, we did a lot of due diligence, you know, to really come up with this plan. There's a great, this includes a grading plan that shows, you know, we don't need all these retaining walls to make the site work. We have space for the storm drainage to all go from the site.
In this site plan, do you think the. Primary equipment entrance is gonna be the Long Hill entrance or the Route eighty entrance? Talking about equipment, I mean, the way you've got it set up, you've got two entrances. The, the, the one on Route eighty almost seems like that might be more of the.
That's more the.
Cars, the smaller trucks. And where the one from Long Hill seems to go directly into the equipment area.
So, actually, the main entrance into the, the storage garage would be at the rear of the building, which is south. Because when you pull in, if you look at the site plan. You could see the building, you know, the, the, you pull in the, the.
So the primary equipment entrance would be the Long Hill entrance?
Um, it could be either, actually, depending on where they're coming, yes. Because they're all gonna go in the back of the building, which is south, so for the big equipment. Now, the front area is gonna be where. Um, you're gonna have your admin part of the building and you're gonna have your maintenance garage on the front side. Um, and so, you know, other, and then you have your fueling station on the side of the building, on the east side of the building. Um, so that will be other departments coming in, will probably go to the front or to the fueling station on the side. And again, I think it just depends on where you're coming from, you know.
Public relations standpoint, but, but also from a use standpoint. If, if you had, if you could direct more in and out from Route eighty, is that a big issue? I don't, because the other thing is the people on Long Hill will then be complaining about the trucks coming up Long Hill. Just as people on Whitfield complained about the trucks coming up Whitfield. I know, but I mean, Route eighty is, to me, seems like such a.
But you have to, you have to get to Route eighty in some way.
But it's not that much further.
I mean, so Long Hill Road is a, is a collector road in town. I mean, it has a lot of.
I don't know, I just feel for positive publicity if we.
I, I think, I mean. Right hand turns in off of Route eighty aren't as bad, but left hand turns in from Route eighty might be something people want to avoid, you know, you know, it's just. It's, it, it's all gonna be about where people are coming from or going to is gonna, you know, kind of direct it. And keep in mind, I mean. How much staff do you have at the, at the public works right now?
Twenty four employees.
We're not talking like. It's not, it's not like a, a, you know, industrial use where there's two hundred employees or something, you know, and. The guys come in in the morning, they go out for the day and then they come in at the end of the day. You know, I think.
And it's the same with Park and Rec, it's not gonna be offices for them.
No, it's, there's gonna be a small office for the foreman and stuff, but it's, it's just, it's all their maintenance people and so. I don't, I mean.
That's what committee, that's what, yeah, the foreman committee.
Weekends are gonna be quiet except for if there's a storm, you know.
We don't want to start designing it now, I guess there's so many variables, that's why.
Well, as soon as this, as soon as this hits, we will get questions, so I'm just trying to be ready.
I mean, it's tolerated where it is now, you know, it's.
It is, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, depending on who you talk to.
Are you planning to move your engineering?
I am.
Location?
Yes, we have identified space in the. Yes, we have uh identified space in the building for engineering to relocate here as well, so we're.
Oh, really?
Yes, because we're busting at the seams at Town Hall South and our working relationship with.
It'll be electronic by then.
Yeah, we'll be electronic with permitting and we really.
Question activity goes into Town Hall South, a building project that has engineering questions, they'd like to say.
We have our, we have our Tuesday morning site plan meeting for new developments to come in, you know, I would still attend those, just go. To Town Hall South or Town Hall for those meetings, it's, uh we're the least, I mean, we, we certainly interact with the public. But we have the least volume of permits that we issue, a lot of them are road excavation permits, which really go hand in hand with, you know, all the works. Yeah, and, and then we, we do stormwater reviews for new development, but that's technically under the zoning requirements, and then um. You know, we, I do flood compliance, uh which we can do electronically through reviews of all the permits.
All of these are just lean to me, for me, lean towards, let's get this going.
Alright, uh we'll bring us together, try to figure out a plan, um when would, when would you typically appoint a building committee?
I would think you'd wanna appoint a building committee now, only because they gotta, they have to put their thumb on the plan, you know, they have to. Offer opportunities for refinement, um.
And just our discussion is for you, it's the same.
Yeah, I really think, you know, we've took, it's taken it quite far without a building committee, um you know, we've worked with all the other departments, but I, I think it's.
So it's the first step with that, you have people in line, they're doing these.
Well, certainly, I think you want, you know, commissioners from both Park and Rec and um the Public Works Commission to be represented on the building committee. And then um, and then staff will be staffed to it, um and then, you know, you. And then you would wanna have, yeah, and then you probably want some at large.
People who have some experience in this regard.
Yeah, you don't want it to be huge, you know, probably five to seven people at tops, I would think. Cause it's gonna be a time commitment too, yeah.
I love doing, I'd be nice to a tree and you, you really get into. I mean, it's like what we've gone through this morning.
Like a little more depth, huh?
Oh, yeah, a lot more, yeah, I mean, you, you, you have to develop an answer, I mean, it's one thing, it's fun to have the discussion. Building committee's gotta answer.
So when you did, you did, you know, since twenty twenty, you've done a lot more extensive work of looking at this site.
Right.
And you don't anticipate, except you don't know about the rock situation, but you don't anticipate any problem. Unidenti- well, it's unidentified, you don't know what it is, but I mean, it looks like the site can work for what you, we wanna do, right?
Yes, yeah, that was why we took it this far, it's, it's a challenging site and um we wanted to make sure. We understood, like, the first plan showed all these walls, which concerned me because of the costs and future maintenance, those. Um you know, we were able to make it work grade wise, you know, without all this wall infrastructure, which is great. Um we wanted to make sure it worked from a storm drain, you know, situation, we also wanted to make sure. Our impacts to the wetlands were gonna be limited, um we have to impact some on the entrance side. On Long Hill, because there's a patch right there where our frontage is, but other than that, we're meeting, you know, at least fifty foot to a hundred foot setbacks from wetlands. You know, cause we have to get through the regulatory process, um so you know, there's a lot, there's a lot, we wanna make sure there was. Septic capacity on the site based on the soils, uh but yes, I think the next thing would probably be getting borings done, you know. Uh in some kind of pattern along the property, really understand the rock versus soil, and then that uh. I think a decision will have to be made as to whether site prep is one, one phase of the project. And then, then construction is the next phase, or if it's all wrapped in one.
I just, I think, to your question, um I am confident in saying that we had a high degree of certainty. That we're gonna be able to build on this property. Cause we had, we had, and we actually expended some uh money to determine.
And we didn't, we, we, we didn't. We paid, we had, we paid a very fair price for that.
Yeah, yes, we did.
Yes, it was less than half a million dollars. Yeah, four hundred sticks in my.
Yeah.
Dave, you, are you happy, Dave?
Super happy.
Yeah, we looked at other properties too, they just were very expensive.
One further south on.
Yeah, that would've been.
Which was more ideal in terms of site prep, it's, it was.
And, and it would, it's, it would, it would. But it just was of asking price, which is millions. Yeah.
I don't even wanna ask about the gas station.
Yeah, well, we, we had talked, a great place to have uh our, our gas thing, but uh no, those are very tanks, uh so.
He, he told me, I, I, I get my gas there for a big pump, gas. Advertisement for this gas station, um I, it's, he's gonna retire at one point, so that, that property may become available.
Well, that's why I didn't wanna bring it up, I just don't know.
Yeah, just, there might be a little remediation of that property.
He's already done remediation, he did um remediation with um the changeover of the tanks just before we bought the. House property from, um but at the time, you know, we have since invested in our own system, but if we had the property to put. The fueling station there, that might be great, but that's to be determined, I mean. I don't think he was ready to shut down, he just invested a lot of.
It just would change, it would, it could change the site plan.
Oh, yeah.
Considerably.
If that property became available.
Yep.
But if we were to take that property and use it for something other than fueling, we'd have to remediate, we'd have to take those tanks out.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'd have to take the tanks out. And we don't want in the ground tanks, we have, we already invested in our ground tanks, and those would get relocated to the new site.
That's right, I remembered that.
No, no, this is, this is, this is just great, encouraging, I think it's gonna be a, just an improvement. As, as we advance and get it done, this is, this is great, the, the information is really, really helpful.
So do you want me to include it in my capital budget, and I'll just put it in next year, and then you guys can decide what year it ends up in? Yeah, through the budget process.
Alright, Janice, thank you very much, um item five dot three, consider to take possible action on a resolution for twenty thousand dollar. Uh in deep bridge funding to continue with the food scrap collection and the implementation of permanent program for the co-location waste reduction. Including food scrap collections, yes?
Yeah, this is the um pay as you throw program that we're implementing um up at the transfer station now. Um we hope to have that fully implemented by early November. It has the slide, maybe mid-November, but we're, we're on track to get that going, and so. If you recall, we had requested grant funding to help us with the launch of the pay as you throw program at the transfer station. Uh we've um brought Waste Zero on board for that purpose, and their assistance in getting us uh. Set up is, is what those, these funds are gonna be used for, and so uh Deep needed a resolution from, from the board to. Accept the grant monies for that purpose.
Alright, is there a motion? Let me try your mic, it's uh, it's like a federating?
Aye.
There you go, those are room.
Aye.
Aye. Um ironically, at nine thirty, uh I just got a text from Peggy Lyons in Madison. Who was contending that they were caught a little blindsided by the announcement. Not the case, I think, I think they have representatives on the committee, plus they approved it at uh.
Here, question, I saw it on Guilford Patch about purchasing bags and, are we gonna. Give a little leeway for people who are not aware of it yet, and they come to dump their garbage the old way?
Yeah, so Waste Zero is gonna be on site for us, working with us. Uh both two weeks prior and two weeks after the launch. In an effort to get people to understand that this is gonna happen, and then to work with them going forward as.
And they can't get bags at the transfer station, they have to get them other places.
We're considering at the start of the program to have them available only, but then transition away, only cause they're. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna um, you know, we have the, this issue of people having purchased tickets ahead of time to use at the transfer station. Versus perhaps making it easy so they can trade them in for the bags at the transfer station, but there's a limited amount of time I want sales at the transfer station. Because it just puts a burden on the workers, and they're valuable, we don't want them, you know, they need to be kept, um you know. The real, the real, I, you know, way of doing this is we'll be reaching out to retailers, page hardware, when they saw it, already reached out to me, like. We wanna sell, you know, the bags, and um they're obviously on our list, um but the retailers um typically like this program. Because people have to go get their bags, and that gives them a little business maybe too, um but it also is convenient for people. To buy the bags where they usually shop, um so certainly Big Y and um Pages in Guilford. We're looking for some other opportunities in Guilford, we have limited like retail in Guilford.
I think Target will probably be.
The Target is one corporation won't cooperate on these things. I don't know, we're, we're, we're considering other locations, but in Madison, we identified Stop and Shop. Uh Rings Inn Harbor, uh Hardware, which is right in the center of town, and then uh Roberts up on Route eighty, that will help serve the North Guilford area as well, so. Uh but Waste Zero is just coming on board with their contract, so I'm not an expert on this, but they are, and they're, they're gonna be invaluable in getting this.
Okay.
Launching this program and getting through it, I've gotten some complaint phone calls already, but. It's just, it's gonna be a lot of um educating and, and getting people to learn the new method.
Be as hard, it's just gonna be an adjustment.
Yeah, any change is hard for people and uh, you know, and.
I think the one point uh we have to reinforce is that the folks who are getting, who have a refuge company, it's not gonna affect.
Right, yeah.
So many people.
Yeah.
Some comments I've gotten is they, they, everyone thinks it's gonna affect everyone.
No.
If you have a waste, you know. No conversation, it's just.
Yeah.
I, I, as somebody who doesn't have a waste law, I think it's gonna be great, rather than having to wait till I have three bags. And be able to just do whatever, whatever flows out, I ain't gonna look forward to it.
Right, and I think.
My biggest issue is I gotta go this week, so do I go buy eight tickets?
Well, yeah, so right now, we're just requiring people to make the purchase app at the time of disposal with the transfer station. We've stopped selling the tickets.
That's what we're trying to get away from, is those transactions.
Yes, and then, and the guys are like, wow, we won't have to do all these transactions once the bags are in place, and that'll give them opportunities to other things.
And they're all, they're, you've been, the staff, they.
Yes, I spent some time up there Friday going over everything with them, and it'll be an ongoing, um you know, education and um. And I think that was said, having Waste Zero who's done this all over the country, um you know, assisting us will make it a lot easier.
And when is the actual official date where we get to start playing bag?
I don't know yet.
And that, and that could.
That's gonna be determined this week. Yeah, Waste Zero literally just got on board with contract signing the end of last week, so I'm trying to get all those details.
Probably, I.
I know, I, I.
Well, I had to get notice out to the people who were, I had to stop selling tickets, and so we had to kind of explain what we're doing, and then that kind of snowballed into, you know. A lot more.
This might be worth asking. Cause it's a very positive thing, really, and, yeah.
Maybe by the end of this week, we can get some.
We need to have the information before we can put up.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna know who our retailers are for sure, you know, and Waste Zero is gonna do that for us, they're gonna set up those relationships and. And set that all up, so once we have the retailers secure, that's when we can really get.
The same, same point, Bishop's right.
I can ask them.
I mean, you know, we know they're community minded and they, they get a lot of uh business and they like to keep encouraging their business.
Get it out of your trunk.
Okay, um. We're good to go on that, right? Five dot four, discuss to take possible action on a request from Sylvan Hills Road, Deepwood Drive and Hilltop Road residents to reclassify their roads. Not surprisingly, uh this was one of the first uh, the pushback we got for the road we, uh the, the work we did. With private roads, where we are no longer gonna be providing certain services on private roads that. Here to fore have been available to them, so um we had uh. Area, they have a couple of neighborhoods um joined together, they've hired an attorney. Uh and we had Janice P, myself, uh met with, with and Mike, well, Michael as well. Uh met with two representatives from the neighborhoods as well as the attorney, and they got a case. We seem to think that there's a, a good possibility that um we should reconsider um. The classification of some of their roads based on uh the, the original development and why. Some roads were classified one way and others were not, so that, you guys wanna, you wanna talk about?
Yeah, so as you recall, we sent out letters to B two private road that um we were plowing for some reason, and to let them know that they're, they weren't. Shouldn't have been receiving plowing, so we had a number of different neighborhoods reach out to us, and you know, most of them have associations and kind of. New neighbor, you know, their roads, um this one particular neighborhood reached out, Michael and I actually met with a whole group of them here.
With, with pitchwork?
Yeah, well, um and um, you know, and they're in a, they're in a development that occurred um over time and. Um their particular area uh in nineteen sixty-one, when it was classified as a B two, wasn't fully really developed yet. Um and that their developer actually seemed to have gone defunct, um we had some leans against them for non-payment of taxes. In that time period and stuff, but other parts of the neighborhood were already classified as B one roads. Um and then the main roads that were part of the development were Chatpinch Island Road and Mulberry Point Road, and we, the town took those as town roads. So this neighborhood um was not really developed in sixty-one, I think there may have been one, maybe two houses in there. And were identified as B two private. I get, I think the thought would be as development incurred, and then they would maybe, you know, get reclassified if once the roads were actually finished. But the roads were never really finished, because I don't, I don't know how it got developed, quite frankly, and so even some of these roads aren't complete, they're more like. Dead end driveways, Sylvan Hills has two entrances, they don't meet in the middle, um some of it, some of it's paved, some of it's not paved. So, you know, it kind of meets the idea of being a private road, cause it's not really well, you know, um developed, but. Um these folks uh saying they don't have a association, you know, with them, um they never thought they were uh B two private roads. And even though that it was listed in the land records and such, as, as being that, so. You know, when they approached me and Michael, we're like, well, you might, you could ask to be reclassified, to be one, since, you know, there's an argument, since other. Similar style roads in the neighborhood are B one, and at least get plowed as opposed to your side of Chatpinch Island, which isn't. The other roads were um, helping out. No, uh Pine, Talia Ridge Road is one of them, and Pinewood and Pinewood. Those are B one, and they're on the north side of Chatpinch Island, and these, all these roads are on the south side of Chatpinch Island, kind of sandwiched between Mulberry Point and Chatpinch Island. So I think, you know, they went ahead and hired an attorney, I, I could have made a petition themselves, but they hired an attorney, and I think she further refined. You know, yeah, the thought that, uh let's get it reclassified, um and so, you know, relying on. Peter, on what the process is um to do that, um for your consideration, you know, obviously, it's not a done deal, it's to your consideration whether you want to do that. Um we have had other roads come to us, um like I said, that recognized they were private and are proceeding to make arrangements for plowing. One other one, there, I'm still waiting here back, whether they wanna stay private, or they, they're set up in a way that they could even ask us to take the road as a. Town road in like an A one road, cause it's got the right of way, it's got everything, so um the question on this neighborhood that you're considering is. There is a right of way, we, you know, we're assuming the ownership of that right of way probably still sits in the original developers. We, you know, we're assuming the ownership of that right of way probably still sits in the original developers', you know, ears. Because it was never conveyed to anyone, um, not that, not a homeowners association nor the town. So, you know, it's kind of one of those typical up in the air, we know what these things are. Um, so Peter can kind of talk about what he thinks the process would be.
Yeah, this is um, um, all based upon a town meeting resolution, December twelfth nineteen sixty-one. That's what set up the road classifications in Guilford. And it also set up the process for changing classifications for the roads. Uh, and with respect to B roads, B one and B two. The reclassification requires town meeting approval. So, we're, we are kind of stuck a little bit because in nineteen sixty-one, not to get too, too far into the weeds here. But we had a very different type of government, different town. And and all of the town meeting powers were derived from statutes. So, our char- charter literally said, the town meeting shall have all powers uh, provided to town meetings in the general statutes. We've since changed that, nineteen seventy-one, changed that to now our town meeting has just the powers that are in the charter. So, the first thing we had to look at is, well, on something like this, can we even have a town meeting? So, I think we're at the point where, yes, that town meeting sort of presumed that there would have to be the reconvening of a town meeting. To deal with this one issue that still remains. Maybe there's a couple of other floaters out there, but this one we see. So, uh, long story short, um, I think these folks with this letter to the town. Um, requesting reclassification is not something you as a board can act on to do the reclassification. But you can set up a town meeting to address it and and put it to a vote at that time. Uh, and I should also point out, so Janice and I and Matt have talked about, we kind of need to fix this. And we should probably, we're going and we are working on an ordinance that will now deal with uh, the classification of roads. And how to reclassify it and I'm kind of jumping ahead, but I'm presuming it's not gonna require a town meeting approval anymore. Because, you know, it's getting awkward and cumbersome to do that.
Even costly, I mean, what a small thing. Not small to them, but I mean, small in terms of dragging the whole town meeting aspect of it.
Right, and one thing I wanna reiterate, Pete and I have talked about is, this is consistent with uh, our interpretation of recent decisions. On what is appropriate for town meeting and what is not appropriate for town meeting. So, this is very consistent with uh, the opinions that have been rendered by, by, by council relative to questions about. What can take place at a town meeting?
Yes.
This is clearly.
Yeah, this is just one of those, I, I think outliers, I guess I would say. It's, it's still there and frankly, if we, if we don't, then we're stuck. You're not authorized to do it, to do it right now. So, I think we have to go this route. Um, and I do think it hangs together, if you, you know, looking through the resolution. I think that interpretation is the one that makes the most sense uh, under the circumstances.
Fixing the, the process is one issue which, you know, just makes common sense to do. But I don't wanna just jump over the question of, do we wanna reclassify the roads? I mean, we're just assuming that we do. How many citizens are we talking about?
Well, I, I, let me just, uh, before you get to that. So, one of the things they were, um, at least partially asking as an option would be for us to accept the road. Or arguably go to court and prove that we had impliedly accepted the road. What's good about, first of all, that has not happened yet. It's not a town road. And the services they have been getting, getting have not been as a town road. It's been as a B one uh category, which is specifically defined as other roads. So, these are roads uh, which have not been officially accepted by the town. So, that would be the category if this passes that they'll move into. So, they will not become official town road. They will not, that is not an acceptance of that. What it is, is a recategorization of our uh obligations to that road.
And the uniqueness Charles, against other folks coming in, asking for that uh, or a classification change. Is that when this neighborhood was built out, some were classified that way. Most likely, as Janice said, the intention was to change them all to that B one classification. Uh, once the project was completed, but then uh bankruptcy or whatever, uh, went into, like, there was no association.
Question I'm trying to ask is, how many people and then if, if we continue down the path. To get this up to speed, what, what are we gonna have to do to these roads to make them? Appropriate town road? I mean, my understanding, I don't know that area not completely, but there's some that are effectively driveways.
Right.
So, obviously, if we proceed down the path of getting them up to speed. Then it's gonna become our responsibility to get those through.
No, we're just gonna, we're just gonna plow them as a matter of course. And then repair in the spring any potholes or, you know, plow damage.
But that's my point. If we proceed down the path of, of accepting them as. I don't wanna use the wrong definition, but whatever class we accept them as a town responsibility. You know, the next step is gonna be, well, our road needs this, our road needs that.
Well, no, because we have, we also have road standards, you know, so um, for instance, this other neighborhood, that's a B two. Their road was actually built to town standards at the time. They just chose to cap, keep it private. And our road standards include, you know, a fifty foot right of way. Um, construction of the, of the roadway to our standards, meaning, you know, base and pavement, drainage. Curvature, steepness of hills, things like that. So, yes, there's been other neighborhoods that asked, well, we'd like, you know, what, how could we make it a town road? And it's like, well, you'd have to improve it, or first of all, you don't even have enough right of way to meet our standards. I mean, they can always ask, but I mean, we would wanna hold to our standards.
Well, I guess that's the question of heaven. If we, if we now accept whatever move forward with these roads. Does that entitle them to ask? And by asking, are they entitled to?
Well, they, they can, anybody could ask for anything. It's just a matter of, do they meet the standards that we would require to take it to another state?
Will we be responsible to bring in the standards other, will they be responsible?
No, they wouldn't be responsible, because I, we don't, we have not accepted it as a town road.
We, we, they could ask, but we have to accept or not accept because it's not up to standard. If they bring it up to standards, they could ask again.
Right, and I just wanna point out too, that we had been plowing this, these roads. It's not like we're adding it to, or just, you know, like we sent out that letter to a number of the two roads. That we're not gonna plow it anymore. Uh, this particular neighborhood kind of seems unique in that it's not an association and they don't have. And and to that point, we have more work to do. We are, we also have other neighborhoods that are associations that we are plowing and we're.
Still.
You know, wondering why. So, there's a lot of.
Start of a cleanup.
Yeah, it's a start of a cleanup. It's, and there's, there's gonna be changes and some fits and starts. And maybe new evidence will come into play during the process or after the process.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna open, open the town to expose to unknowns.
Uh, as Janice said earlier, there was, I believe I received a call from the same individual about accepting the, the roads. And I'm surprised I haven't heard more, but that individual indicated that there, this is a relatively affluent uh, neighborhood. Uh, who has, they've funded the rebuilding of their roads through their association on numerous occasions. They can't find somebody to plow it.
Right.
They can't find a contractor willing to plow it, so that's one of the, one of the challenges.
Yeah, because that particular road is actually a.
Acceptable.
It's wide. I mean, it's like, you know, it's a twenty, I think it's twenty-two or twenty-four feet wide, eight's surface. Where a lot of these private areas, even this area we're talking about, is all of, you know, fifteen feet wide, eighteen feet wide roads. It's like, you know, glorified driveways. Um, where a, you know, a contractor can easily plow something like that. But when you're doing like a bigger, you know, bigger equipment, it's more, you know, multiple passes. So, it's a different, you know, larger trucks probably.
So, what do you need from us today?
Uh, let's, uh, I'd like to motion to set a town meeting for uh, October twenty-first at eight thirty prior to our regular, our next regularly scheduled meeting. Bless you.
Sorry about that.
Oh, you apologize.
So, this probably, I, I'm just wondering if having a town meeting prior to our regular meeting. Will allow sufficient time and energy. Doesn't sound like this is gonna be a moveable people again.
I think this will concern particularly, yeah, outside of the neighborhood.
Okay, I'll.
Is there a second? Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know. I like, this is a good example of a situation where we would decide to send something to town. I think it's a town meeting can vote on this.
That's right.
It also has the advantage to Charles's point of avoiding the mission creep of this same neighborhood saying, well, you gave us this, let's get the next step. And we can all emphasize at that meeting that every single one of these examples, every neighborhood is different and unique. And and doing it in one place doesn't automatically mean it's gonna happen in another place.
Great, agree. Thanks, Luke. All right, uh, item six, uh, Public Works Director Dave Castro. Six dot one, consider to take possible action to contract with JJ Brothers off the state contract for the grinding and removal of large wood from the brush and leaf facility. Good morning.
Good morning. Hopefully that'll be quicker. So. So, we have a ton of logs uh that have built up over time over there at Brush and Leaf Facility. And what's happening is people are dumping their, their brush and, and the pile's getting pushed out more and more. The tree crew is taking down big logs. We're finding more storms are leaving trees everywhere that we have to bring them there. So, this contractor will come in for four days with their own equipment. Um, they will grind all the, the wood and they will haul it out too, so we won't be stuck with the, with the material. It'll totally be gone.
This is in your ongoing effort to clean up the.
Yes.
Formerly known stump though.
Yes.
The brush and leaf facility.
Brush and leaf facility.
Much more la di da. Maybe we can have a food truck down there. I don't know.
Well, you could certainly have one no season, cause the number of people that head out from that area to hit the, the field and either snowshoe or biking. It's pretty impressive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So, that's, that's what we're looking to do, uh, with the contractor JJ off a state contract.
How does this differ from what we used to do with the folks in Durham of that grinding?
Well, we still use them, but they, they do all the, the smaller brush, whereas this contractor, twenty-four inch, thirty inch trees. They're gonna take all of these. They have what's called a tub grinder. It's huge and it's, it's face like this, so the grapple will grab it and it drops right in. And you just see the tree just start to disappear. Shoots it into the truck.
Like a big blender.
Kind of like a pencil sharpener, you know, you know?
That's a good example.
And this money is coming from, I'm sorry, this is coming from existing budget or?
It's gonna come from my, from my summer budget, from.
Okay.
From my existing budget.
There is, is there a motion?
Yeah, just wondering if we, if we do this now, this catches us up from past big logs or this is gonna be an ongoing need.
I think it's gonna be an ongoing need, but I think what's gonna happen is in those four days, there's gonna be a substantial amount of wood removed. Um, my goal over the, the course of this brush and leaf facility is to totally clean this place up. And um, this is, this is gonna definitely help it.
And this is accumulation of material over several years.
Oh, lots of years, lots of years.
It's getting, getting hauled off site and there's no, there's no place we could use this material?
Um.
The chips?
No, actually, uh, we have so much chips up there already and dumb ground mulch that, um.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we would ever have a, a, a place to use it, yeah.
All right, all right, cool. I mean, that's a small part of the cost and that, that hundred yard trailer is enough for everything you need?
Yes, I think he does multiple trips. He just keeps coming back and forth.
Oh, interesting, okay.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion?
You made it?
Is that you, Luke?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion. I, I get it.
Sixteen seven, yeah, they have the uh, quarter sixteen seven.
Yeah, one day at the trailer or is that what you?
Yeah, he made a mistake. It's supposed to be four days.
Four days.
That's why I.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Six dot two, discuss to take possible action to contract with Connecticut Seal Coating. Uh, off the state contract for crack sealing of certain roads. Dave?
Yes, so we crack sealed roads this year in town already and uh, I received zero complaints on it, which. Usually when we treat the roads, we, we get a complaint or an issue from a resident, but there were no complaints. And uh, it came off fantastic. They came in with their crew. They, they blew out all the cracks. They filled it in. Uh, there's two different uh, types of crack seal. Use your standard crack seal and then there's mast that cracks you, which use your bigger cracks. So, they came in and they gave us uh, an estimate for, for doing both. That's why um, in the, the purchase order, you see two different uh, amounts added up for that total. Um, but I mean, it's a substantial amount of roads that we're going to crack seal.
Yeah.
And uh, once you keep the water out of the base of the road, your road will last longer. So, that's, that's the whole point of the crack sealing is to take care of that. So, uh, crack sealing, we're, we're looking at Kendall Court, Dover Court, Pondview, Cambridge Way, Garrison Drive, Sunset Ridge. Dom Ave, Tupelo, Laurel Cliffs, Lantern Hill and Edwards. Which is a substantial amount of roads in town.
How many miles total?
Two point two seven. And then uh.
You list the roads, it seems like a lot. When you list the mileage, compared to the miles.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Dave, uh, six dot three, consider to take possible action to contract to New England Asphalt Services. Under bid number twenty-three PSX zero one zero two for chip sealing and fog sealing of the roads after crack sealing.
Yes, so the, when we maintain our roads, it, it can't just be a one process, one step process for most of our roads. Um, we're trying to ex- extend the longevity of our roads. Uh, so that we don't have to do as much reclaiming. We don't have to do milling. Uh, so the process that New England Asphalt uses now, which I went to Clinton. And I looked at a couple of the roads that they did this year and it came out really good. Um, what they did was, so with crack seal, obviously to fill all the cracks. Then what you do is you come in with a chip seal, which I know everybody doesn't like chip seal. But in, in the past, the chip seal would just, you put the stone down, sweep it and just leave it alone. It'd get into the grass, it'd get onto people's cars, everything. It was a mess. Now the process is they do the chip seal and then they come back a day later or within that week and they do what's called a fog seal over the top. So, now the stone has the emulsion on the bottom to lock the stone in and the emulsion on top to lock the stone in. So, it's a completely black road. The stone is locked in there by both processes. It's like a sandwich. And that stone stays in. Um, they did it in my town this year too. And it's very minimal, the stone that you're gonna see that, that comes up out of the road after that process. Um, it's a really good uh, process. I believe in it. I, I saw it in Clinton. I saw it in my town and, and, and I liked it. I really thought it was a good, good way to uh, extend the life of these roads.
And reduce the costs of coming to your office and my office. All right, uh, any further, uh, is there a motion? Do we have a motion on the table?
Oh, second.
All right, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, uh. All right, uh item six dot four, discuss to take possible action to contract with Freightliner of Hartford off the state contract. To purchase uh state contract number fourteen PSX zero two three nine to purchase a hook lift truck using capital funds. This is, you talked about this term capital budgeted.
I did. So I went to my commission and they wanted to make a couple changes to the attachments to the truck, which was fine and we did, so it brings down. I believe we had budgeted for four hundred and fifty thousand and now the the price of the truck will be around three hundred and fifty two thousand. Um, so we, there was an attachment we took off, but we had an attachment, so we will have uh. One of the attachments is gonna be obviously uh sand salt. For for plowing, the truck will be used for plowing. Another attachment being anti anti ice tank, so you know, you see the state roads at the white lines?
Yeah.
The pre-treating roads, we're gonna do that. Uh, the studies have shown that. And I can't remember the exact name of the town, but there's a town in upstate New York and they get lake effect snow. We we treat our roads to two hundred pounds per lane mile and they did the same thing, salt, that's the state spec, that's two hundred pounds per lane mile. Well, that town is down to fifty pounds per lane mile. Reducing the amount of salt that they're putting on road and it's because of the pre-treating of the roads. So we wanna get to a point where we can do that too. So the the tank is the first step, we don't have means to store it or anything like that. Uh, the town in North Branford bought a machine to make the the material, so we would just purchase it from them. Fill the truck, go spray the roads. And it cuts down on uh our response time, it cuts down on. Uh, everything, so we're reducing our environmental impact with that that tank. Basically, it's just salt and water. And it's just diluted, heavily diluted saltwater. And that's it. So we we uh, that's one of the attachments. Another attachment is two open top containers, so basically like dumpsters. For the back of the truck. One we would use to put our scrap metal in, the other one we could use for hauling wood, wood chips. The goal is if we get a storm and hopefully we don't, but if we get a a big windstorm. You have the two containers, truck drops off one container while we're filling that, he's grabbing the other one. He's picking that one up, going to dump it and leaving the other container so the crew can continue to load the the material. Uh, another one is uh a flatbed attachment, we trailer a lot of our stuff. So with the flatbed, you don't need a class A for that, you can. So a flatbed comes right down on the ground, pull a piece of equipment on it, tie it down, put it back on the truck and away you go. Um, a chip box, so we have a chip box now, but this is a much bigger chip box. We get into a storm situation. Our tree crew would use it quite a bit when they get into these bigger jobs, they just fill the chip boxes. Right now. Chip box we have is smaller, so they go to dump, then they have to come back, we're, now you have a full day to load that thing up with chips. Um, then there's an extra skid which is for uh. That was uh for um. The uh sand salt, it has to be attached to a skid itself. And then um. And that's it, and then uh it comes with the plow and there are attachments down the road we could purchase for this if we wanted to. Um, I mean, one of the things, it's like when we do the things on the green, they wanna. They wanna get away from all the little uh garbage cans, they can put the dumpster there, you know, it has its own cover too, to cover everything. So, I mean, that that's another thing, so.
I'm curious as to what the what the commission decided you didn't need.
Uh, the attachment, the attachment that I wanted was a uh was a pipe jetter. And uh I looked at the specs on it, I reached out to a department who had the same attachment and they said. It's great, but it only works up to six inch pipes. I'm like, well, that's not gonna help us, because our pipes are like eighteen, twenty-four, thirty, they're six inch pipes. So it was under power.
A pipe what?
A pipe jetter. So when you get your clog pipes, it's got a head on it and it shoots the water this way, propel the head that way. And what it does is it it goes into a clog and it will blow the clog right out. And then you pull the, you pull the hose back out, because it uses high pressure water and that's it, pipe's clean. And the clog is gone. But it was too small of a of a piece for the for the truck, it was too underpowered for what we need here in town.
All right. All right.
I I feel like this is in the capital budget, so we've already decided to do it. But I have to say, watching the parade, when all the beautiful equipment was coming past, people all around, they were saying, what is that? Why do we need that? And every single thing that's presented to us, I totally makes sense to me. Collectively, it it seems like a lot of specialized equipment. I don't know, and and the benefit of all this, as you've mentioned, it's much more efficient. So we're doing the things we're already doing, but more efficiently. Are are we saving anywhere? You think we would need? We would need a bigger staff if we didn't have these or we'd be looking for more positions if we didn't get these or? How how does this work for the taxpayers?
Dave can answer, but I think some of the things that you asked us for over the years. It it saves us from outsourcing. Equipment or or using another company. As my profession.
Yep, yep.
So that ultimately got the investment of the. Equipment, which is a lot, but maybe in the long run, we're saving some money, you know, I can think of is that. Janice bought that bridge for Chittingon and Public Works in a storm. Yeah, they couldn't have been able to do that. In the past, I don't know if that's a good example or not.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good take on it.
And how many hours you, we heard earlier today, that Ben Geary saying Public Works saved them twenty thousand dollars. The work they did up at Pitt, so so it's reuse of the, it's reuse of the staff, so there are efficiencies being created. They're able to get more stuff done, right, do more stuff internally. And then the other example, I think this is a good opportunity. The other one was the um. Per uh removing trees.
Yeah.
The vehicle we bought, right, which which saves, you know, which we're getting more done in town, Kevin, Kevin's phone is, well, still busy, but.
He'll convince us he still needs more trees.
Of course he does.
Yeah.
But, so you're, that's a great point, you know, we've created efficiencies, we've allowed them to do more things.
Right, and it's not contained just to Public Works, it's really townwide, touching all the separate departments too.
Not only doing more things, doing more things safe.
Yes, that was the other thing with the tree thing, because. And and also, I mean, at some point, we can't use this as an excuse anymore, but I I do feel that some of these purchases are catch up. For some earlier years in in this twenty-first century that for for valid reasons, um we did not. Necessarily buy the equipment we should have been buying during that time.
Yeah, good, alright. It's very helpful, I wish I could think of my feet better, I would have told all those people at the parade.
I I've been on this board for a few years and I remember the first, you know, cycle. We had trucks from nineteen seventy seven.
Yeah.
And then we bought some from Wallyford that were twenty-five years old.
Alright, so you know, Sandy's point, that's accurate. Then the other thing that I learned over the years is. Equipment has changed. I mean, I remember buying the first batch of fairly new trucks. You know, I'm saying ten years ago now. And, you know, the cost of of the trucks was enough, but then a few months later, we had to buy all the programs and everything to fix them. You couldn't couldn't work on them and they shut down after a few, you know, if it was due for a maintenance thing. The machine would shut down or go into limp mode or whatever they call it. So, I mean, a lot of our investment is getting us up to speed, which I think we have. And now we're starting to move forward in in putting in some of this new equipment to work. I mean, we're improving different areas of the town that are very ambitious.
You know, and and again, folks, we don't, we can't expect folks to understand the depth and the variety of work that they do.
Yes.
Alright, uh for instance, sort of like. Week, week and a half ago, you guys did all the uh catch bases on High Street from Route one to the library. Right, that requires some pretty specialized equipment. And what'd you put in, like eight of them on that?
We did all the basins for all the roads are paving.
Right.
And that's something that we don't contract out.
And you know, when you're you're paying X numbers of dollars for employee, the more efficient. Efficiently you can put them to work with with good, you know, safe equipment. And that's just bringing the whole town up to speed.
And and I recall from some years past and working with Tom Prior, he had a list of things that he always wanted to get to.
Yeah.
But couldn't effectively get to, right, because. And now we could create those efficiencies, it's so sort of like my honey-do list at home, right, there's a couple there that I've never never seen to get to, but. Uh, it just allows us to be more effective in getting, getting more, so. Great, there. All right, we've got a motion on the table and uh a second, um let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, Dave, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing a level of uh creativeness and ingenuity to the table.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Thanks.
All right, uh next up, uh item seven, Town Planner Anne Hartson, who is not available, um. She's at a conference. Uh, seven dot one is to discuss to take possible action to call the fifty thousand dollar outstanding bond for Fentus Knoll. Transfer funds to pay for the remaining planning and landscaping plans. Uh, let me give you a little bit of background, Fentus Knoll um is uh. Uh, at the development uh over on the eastern side of the the western side of town. Which has um had some impact on some neighbors on uh Old Quarry Road, not Old Quarry Road, um.
Cause it's like uncolonial and I think.
Yeah, uh and um. Fentus Knoll is exactly that, it's high, uh there's been some issues with uh the the developer finishing the landscaping plant. Um, and this has actually been going back and forth for a couple of years. Uh, and he is, we are at a point where his non-compliance is a problem. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do the work, we'll contract, we'll hire uh landscape architect, although. Anne is actually a landscape architect as well, so she'll probably design it. Uh, but uh when I pull the bond, whether or not it amounts to the fifty thousand or not, has yet to be determined. Um, so the uh planning and zoning has already approved them pulling the bond based on. Their experience with this developer, so uh I entertain a motion to authorize the. Calling the bond on the Fentus Knoll development. Uh, is there a motion?
Some moved.
A second, all right, any further comments or questions? Uh, hearing none, let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Um, item number two, consider to take possible action on the award of RFQ, RFP number three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Plan of Conservation and Development Update, um. You guys have been presented, I think, with all the materials, um so. Did we have a scoring there?
Uh, yeah, it's attached.
It's all there, right, um so uh we would uh. If there's, if was there a motion to approve the award to the uh Resilient Land and Water MP Group, uh RKG. Um, uh contract. For updating the plan of conservation and development, which uh is due next July, end of next July. Um, it's an aggressive timeline, um but uh these folks were the unanimous selection of of the three. And myself, um their uh their. Interview or presentation to board was more like a conversation than it was anything else, and if you take a look at uh the CVs. They've done a significant amount of work on behalf of the town over the years, um. And I don't know if that is in here or not, I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah.
Uh, on page four, uh following P O C D's have been developed by MP Planning Group. Um, they represented, I think it's. Twenty-seven uh some communities in state, including the town of Guilford, including several other, um. Consulting engagements such as the Guilford Municipal Coastal Program, the Guilford Hazard mitigation plan. Community Coastal Resilience Plan, uh the uh. And several other, well, Chimney Corner and Falcon Road uh projects, so these folks have uh. Have a good deal of experience and historical knowledge. Uh, and they were the architects or the ones who uh did the P O C D uh ten years ago, so. Alright, so is there a motion to uh award it to that group?
Some moved.
Yeah, second, comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay.
Ready? Go ahead.
So Steve, are you okay, Luke, what what do you want to?
Yeah, I I I'm gonna get through the appointments and representative uh appointments and resignations that I'm gonna have to check out. Left, but schedule's pressing here.
Yeah, get back, get back to your vacation. All right, uh eight, appointments and resignations, uh rapid fire, here we go, act on a resignation received from Steven Re- Steve Renchy. From the uh Youth and Family Services Board, I'd like to make that with uh appreciation and regret. As Steve Renchy uh was a retired police officer as well as have served on the Youth and Family for a number of years. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, please second, there we go. Uh, let me try your minds, uh Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, act on a recommendation to uh appoint Deborah Nelson to the Human Services Council, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
A second, uh let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Uh, I, eight three, act on a recommendation, appoint Tom Lewis to the Inland Wetlands Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire in February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-six, is there a motion?
Second.
Let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room? Aye, that motion carries, uh eight dot four, act on a recommendation to reappoint Dave Davidson to Marina Commission for a new term to expire. November thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, uh let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, eight dot six, act on a recommendation to reappoint Wendy Dockry to the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, is there a motion?
Yeah, make them up, yeah.
Okay.
We skipped Steve.
We skipped.
Oh Steve, oh sorry, yeah, okay. Uh, we'll go back to Steve, um. Uh, on your, on Wendy Dockry, uh let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Uh, and uh eight dot five, act on a recommendation to reappoint Steve Cox to the Pension Committee for a new term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
You got it, in a second, we got a second, uh let me try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, act on a recommendation to reappoint Greg Broderick to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission for a new term to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Uh, a second, uh we try your minds, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Alright, uh that motion carries. Eight dot eight, act on a recommendation to reappoint Eve Astraskey to the Youth and Family Services Board for a new term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Eight dot nine, act on a recommendation to reappoint Terry Kane to the Waste Transfer Station Advisory Committee for a new term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Eight dot ten, act on a recommendation to appoint Elias Caveche. Uh, as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission to fill the vacancy for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor, Sucka Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Alright, item eight dot eleven, discuss to take possible action on appointments to the newly established Affordable Housing Commission, Sandy.
Uh, goodness, um I'd like to make that motion. To recommend the applicants uh for approval by this board.
Uh, is there a motion? You, you're making a motion.
I can make a comment.
And and a comment, unless, after we have a second, uh in a second, I'll second it.
Um, this has been an ongoing process because we uh realized that we needed to expand the board to uh create a fair balance of. Uh, registered political parties or unaffiliated, unaffiliates in the town, so um. There are ten um regular members plus um first selectman who is eligible to vote. And um we do have a fair balance now with one, as you can see on the chart, one empty seat that can only be filled by. Uh, cannot be filled by a Democrat, can be filled by either an independent and unaffiliated or a Republican candidate. And the same with the second slot for alternate, so uh but we are able to. Hopefully with your votes today, uh convene this as a commission and go forward with the work that we know we need to do. With the understanding that we're gonna still be uh vigilant about trying to get these slots filled, so I'm happy to say this in a public forum. Um, if anybody um is interested, there are applications from the available from the Selectment's Office and um. Cause we'd love to round out the membership, but um. I think we have a very um excellent balanced group with some old timers from the committee and some new timers uh from. with some old timers from the committee and some new timers, uh, from the town, so, uh, anyway, that's my comment.
Great.
Well done.
All right, um, and there's some, uh, old timers, uh, who were not on the most recent committee, but were on previous committees, Jim Goodrich, who was Chair, Chair of the Guilford Housing Authority when they built Seachance Hall, so, and then, and eventually, we're gonna need to expand our conversation beyond just the affordable housing to the Guilford Housing Authority, and possibly doing more, uh, in that vein, because that is affordable, that is senior living and, uh, disabled living, so, and, and the waiting lists are far too long.
And, and Karen Stevens has been active in
Right.
active in, you know, oh, anyway, she's coming back, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second, uh, any further comments or questions? Uh, I'll do one comment, Sandy, thanks for the work you continue to do on that.
And I'll, I'll be
You were, you were, you did have a lifetime appointment.
It looks like it, I know, I'm not, um, I'm gonna be the board of select and designate, so I'm still gonna be involved, I will be a voting member, but I'm still gonna be involved.
Okay. Uh, like Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, logging out, everyone, see you, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks.
Uh, uh, it's item nine, nine dot one, act on request for the, uh, from the Rotary to use the green on January one, twenty-twenty-five for the annual Frosty Five K Road Race.
I would like to make that motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Second it, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item two, act on request for the Guilford Keeping Society, uh, to place a sign on the green advertising its Stony Creek Quarry Tour, uh, taking place, that, that is a really good tour, um, taking place on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, is there a motion?
Some moved.
A second, uh, one comment, it was like, ah, I've done a tour, um, and it was when Carl Balistraci was doing the tours, three years ago, so, um,
Didn't Uncle Ross get involved?
Yeah, it was up in, and, and actually, I have the book and a piece of Stony Creek, uh, granted from that, you had the same lifetime.
Very special.
All right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries, act, uh, nine dot three, act on request, the Guilford Garden Club, uh, to place a sign on the green advertising its holiday boutique taking place December sixth, twenty-twenty-four, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second, and a second, let me try your minds, all in favor? All right, that motion carries, nine dot four, act on request, Shoreline Arts Trail, a place assigned on the green, advertising its Open Studios event taking place November sixteenth, seventeen, twenty-twenty-four, is there a motion?
That's some move.
And a second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? All right, that motion carries, act on request for Parks and Recreation, a place assigned on the green advertising its Senior Craft Expo taking place October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, sign placement ten eleven to ten twenty-six, is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Nine dot six, act on request from the Cove Center for Green Children, a place assigned on the green advertising this run for the Cove, taking place on October twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, is there a motion?
Uh, some moved.
And a second, uh, a second, let me try your minds, all in favor? All right, that motion carries. Nine dot seven, Guilford Inn of Faith volunteers, uh, neighbor helping neighbors, uh, Wheels on Wheels, Chrissy Barton, uh, and this is, um, uh, for, the sign is for, uh, the Veterans, uh, Patriotic Dinner, uh, which I think we all received, we all received the invitation from Christie.
Can you just remind me of the date again?
Yeah, uh, it's on Veterans Day, it's Veterans Day, yeah, so I'll, I'll reach out to Christie on that, make sure, all right, so, this, uh, is there a motion to, uh, approve?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, item ten, committee reports, Sandy, you just gave yours.
Yeah, I'm good.
And also, we, uh, we've met, we had a meeting last week, um, with Representative, just as Sandy, uh, myself, uh, with a representative from the Department of Housing.
Um, yes, uh, Ben Lovejoy, um, there's like a subset, uh, in that department of trying to, um, help towns with their affordable housing, um, plans to go forward, and there are, uh, I believe it, if the help would come in the form of expertise and advice, but also some possible funding for some studies and or grants, like we did in the, in the fifteen, sixteen, sixteen's of twenties, um, so it's gonna take a little more, um, work on our part, but it, it, it it didn't sound that difficult to get the funding if we explained why, what we want to do, so it was, it, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit busy on this, but, um, it looks like we can get some grants to go forward to, specifically to re-identify some areas in the town where we could do some of these smaller, it's kind of, you know, these smaller, um, affordable housing developments, um, you know, like maybe ten or twelve, you know, to fit them into neighborhoods, and the grants in, uh, ten years ago were, uh, transit-oriented districts, and now we can, I think, go beyond that a little bit, whi- which is nice, because it, it gave us like basically Route One and then Town Hall South, which was a fair amount of land, but, but there's other places in Guilford that if we're doing small developments, the sewer and water isn't such a, an issue, so, um, anyway, so that, that's what it was, did I do, did I do better there?
Yeah, definitely.
I'm an F to an A.
Or if you write or not, but it made sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, for, for instance, uh, might be able to tap into this, uh, this grant funding to do, uh, engineering, uh, and sites for rate work on the Song Hill.
Song Hill, right, right.
Now, uh, we had presupposed that those costs, those costs would, uh, be covered under that C D B G grant that we got, which I think I told you, we, I traded that federal grant, a million dollars in pre-development work for a million dollars' worth of Connecticut State Bonding at the request of the Department of Housing, right, right? And so, this would, if we were able to get this funding, um, that would, that would make that grant go even further, because they wouldn't have to
Make it a little bit for this. A little more, um, if we can do that work, then a developer doesn't have to do this.
Out of the
Makes it a little more appealing for someone to possibly
Change into pot.
Yes, yes.
Good, okay, anything else, anybody else have anything, old, old business, new business? Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.